...to do the right thing for the children of which we serve, this community in which we serve. We just want to say thank you. We ask that we continue to bless our school system as we go through this year, make it one of the greatest years yet. We just want to say thank you. If we ask all this in your darling son, Jesus name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At tab two you'll find the agenda. That's the review of the agenda as presented. Have a motion or second? Motion and second? Any further discussion? Not called question? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? Next, on the meeting minutes of the July the 8th meeting, behind tab three. And it's your pleasure, Chair, to entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion?
Yes Chairman, it's not mentioned there, but I was not present that meeting, but I did my phone call. I got caught up in a flight, layover, I don't have that too, so I was actually, no way I could get here. I was on up in Atlanta Airport for about four hours. It can be a minute time, but don't need to be a minute.
It was mentioned by the board.
Okay, I just wanted to mention that.
I don't, I mean, have a problem. Put them up.
For a little more time is that?
It didn't have a list of us being present, so this is, but if you want to get specific in the minutes.
Actually, you had color.
Right, right, they probably did it.
Any further? Not to entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion? Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? Thank you. Superintend information.
My thank you. The first thing you note is just one sheet congratulating me on our school nutrition program. They should be congratulating Quay, and I know that they did. This is data from two years ago. That's just the way they do it. But at that time, even though they just issued it in June of 2013, we were above the state level in participation at all of our schools. And that can't mean but one thing. They're serving very good meals at the schools. I know that those ladies work hard and turn out a lot of meals each day, and our kids seem to appreciate it. And Ms. Quay has already individually recognized the managers with the certificate. Just wanted you to have that confirmation. The second thing is an email that we received from Dr. John Barge talking about our withdrawal from the Partnership for Assessment of the Rhythm of College and Careers, or PARC, the consortium. We all saw it coming. No one wanted to admit it for a long time, but they had been working on Plan B for probably over a year. This test, if you recall, came out of race to the top and was going to be all online for all students. And it was a lofty goal, but it was an expensive goal. Our state just in the end did not have enough money to help all school systems get on board with their IT issues so that they could do that. So they've been working on IT. It will be a pencil and paper test, which is what kids are mostly used to. Just so you'll know, you've been hearing about PARC, hearing about PARC, and now you're hearing it's a no-go because it's four times as costly as the regular pencil and paper. The next thing, there's two large bundles in here, and we're certainly not going to read through those, although I know one board member has already because he told me he has. The CLIP, which stands for Consolidated Local Improvement Plan, and the LEA Plan, just our local school improvement plan. But I did want to turn that over to Ms. Humphrey just to give you just a very brief overview of how this comes together each year. It's something that's done each year with principals and their staff, their leadership teams, and it turns into this document. Ms. Humphrey?
Thank you. What you see, this is your LEA Plan. This is the district's plan for our instruction for this year. And the way this comes to be is we have a comprehensive needs assessment that's conducted at every school, and we take that information. It's surveys, it's achievement data, program effectiveness evaluations, and then we bring all that to the table to come in and revise and identify our prioritized list of needs. That's how we determine the things we're going to work on for the next school year. And that's what this is. We include the different strategies. This includes some budget items in here for the different strategies. And then we have what you see here. It's called the CLIP, or what Mr. Humphrey referred to, the Comprehensive LEA Implementation Plan. This is about 31, 32 questions that have to do with our LEA Plan. And we specifically pull out information that relates to the strategies, the needs, and the programs. And the programs involve local programs, it involves federal programs, it involves state programs. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
You say this is updated every year?
It is, updated every year.
Or if we don't meet one of these goals?
Well, what we do, we assess that. And if we don't meet the goal, then we continue working on that. The goals that you see, the ESEA goals, those are national goals. And then if you look under that, and he's referring to this sheet right here.
Those are in blue.
Those are in blue. And then...
Where, excuse me, the national goal?
Right, the ESEA. Those are your five national goals. And then underneath that, we have our own objectives for, you know, specific objectives related to that particular goal. And what we do is, and some of them, we don't hit the target on every year, but we continue to implement new strategies, more, you know, involved strategies, just different things to try to reach that.
Oh, we penalize if we do not meet goals?
You're penalized in this way. They identify schools that are needs improvement schools. Needs improvement schools now are called focus schools, priority schools, and alert schools. Lanier County is not identified, none of our schools are identified for needs improvement. Although we may not be reaching as high as we want to go, we're not identified as a district with any needs improvement schools at this time. And I appreciate your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Humph.
Okay, we passed around a minute ago the annual local school board training. Time to start thinking about this coming year and whether you would like to go to Atlanta for the state conference. Just keep that in mind. I'll get that information to you. I believe it may be up on the GSBA website now, so you can take a look at it. I know that several of you have been, Ms. Matthews, Pat, and Mrs. Strickland have been to that one. And it's a great conference. And you can pick up those six hours that we have to have, and then we have to have three hours of whole board training. The next item that we have are schedules for our middle school, JV, and varsity ball games for football and softball. It's hard to believe, but it's here. They've already started playing softball, and our first football game will be Friday. It's a scrimmage at Pell, 7:30. That's the six.
Sixteen?
Sixteen. So there you have them. You can put them on your calendar and get ready for some great football and softball from our teams. See that click just to get action on us.
All right, back to items, the school nutrition, annual bid. Let's see.
All right, you should find the bids that Ms. Quay has put together under groceries. There are actually two, because what she can do is that she doesn't have to go exclusively with one of those, so she can pick the best prices from either or companies. Same thing with the supplies. They allow her to pick and choose. If it's cheaper at Williams, she'll buy it there. If it's cheaper at Catco, she gets it there. And the others, you can see that she's highlighted those that she recommends, so we'll make that recommendation happen.
Okay. Bids on the nutrition program, Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Certainly.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion? Not called question? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? Thank you. Next.
Next is a recommendation that we lower our military rate from 17.16 to 16.96.
Okay. I'm certainly in favor of that. Chair, entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion or a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion? Not called question? All those in favor, aye? Opposed?
Thank you. The community will appreciate it. It'll be interesting to see if there are very many other boards that lower that military rate. It's been 17.16 for a long time. The next thing we have is an athletic handbook. This is put together each year, and you approved it. Our new athletic director had not gone through it yet with his coaches and with Mr. Culpepper, but now we have it. The basic differences between what's in here for this year and what was in there last year is they changed the dual sport policy and went back to the way it was. There's no mandate if a student is participating, let's say, in basketball and baseball season starts, it's up to the coaches to work it out so that the kids can play both sports. And our coaches have said they'll do that, that they'll not have to have a mandate or policy, they'll do that. There's a new concussion policy that was passed by this year's legislature. It's a very strict one. It's a good move in our state, and so that's in here. We have to notify all parents of any sport about the dangers of concussions and what they are and how serious it can be. And that particular page is not in here, right, Mr. Culpepper? That's just something to catch just handout.
That law is not in there, but there's a clause about notification of concussion or possibility of concussion, and all the coaches have to take a concussion awareness course to GHSA, and they're all working on that now. But they have to take that and pass it before they can be a coach.
Right, I believe Coach Johnson told me all the football coaches had completed it.
They're all completed. All the other sports have completed.
Right.
Football and softball have been done.
And it's just a real good policy. We have to have a policy in our manual by January, so we don't have to rush out and put one in there right now, because we are working on revamping our entire policy manual, and that's in there. And we will be meeting on the 20th to begin that process of going over all of our policies. It'll be a full day.
On the concussion, we have an athletic trainer who works for our team to out of local hospitals or any...
Not that I'm aware of.
None on the sideline?
No, we don't have one on the sideline. We have EMTs that are there at football games, but we don't have one. Be nice to have one.
So if we suspected a student, athlete with a concussion, they just might sit out for a short period?
That's right. They sit out until a medical professional clears in.
I guess we need to approve athletic...
Brian, you have to go through it first.
I give a motion to approve. Have a motion, Mr. Chastain? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? Mr. Lockley, any further discussion on the athletic handbook? Not called question? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? We have personnel contract services, resignations, recommendations, and transfers. And, okay.
Before we go through all these, I would like to make a suggestion that next year, that some of these teachers have been working for our system now for two weeks without a contract. Next year, if we could have a meeting at the end of June and the end of year line so they'll have a contract in hand when they come on board, I think it'd be a nice gesture on our part, instead of having to work two weeks without it. Better than have one in hand than not.
Okay.
Just something to think about.
Well, that just... Would require a call to the meeting.
I mean, we gotta have one for our budget anyway at one time, so we can do that same time.
Yeah. I mean, I think some of this...
Yeah, but according to our policy, I can put folks to work pending the next board meeting, but you're right, certified people do not have a contract in hand. And I think this year there was only a concern expressed by one person, but because...
If you're a young teacher, you're kind of sweating, you know, are they going to approve me or not? Of course we're going to approve you, but...
That's true, but at the same time, if they haven't been officially approved and someone else offers them a job and says, "I'll give you a contract," then that's a pretty hard tug.
We can certainly work towards that, Mr. Chastain, to see that being a problem.
How do you want to take these?
We'll do it at pleasure board, if y'all can, y'all want to take them all in one, or? I've got a few questions, I'll see how I know A and B. Well, let's take A and B then altogether.
Make a recommendation, set, or make a motion and accept A and B?
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion? Called for the question? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. And C, transfers. Judge, your question, is that something that would be going to executive session? Personnel matter?
Quite possible. That's what I'm asking you on that.
All right, we'll hold off on that then. Come back to C. We go to D, athletic coaching assignments. I think that's behind one of these tabs, Mr. Humph.
Right, if you go back to the back, looks like this.
Behind tab six, I think, almost the last page.
The, you've already approved those that are not highlighted, and then these coaches, along with our AD, have filled in the remainder of the slots. So those that are highlighted are the ones that we'll be looking at approving tonight in their coaching areas.
Does this put us a certified personnel with every school? I mean, with middle school, we got, we got somebody certified with football and basketball.
Right, I'm looking down right, right quick to make sure. If they're not, then they'll have one that will be right there with them. For instance, at girls' basketball, the head coach is Coach Vincent, and we have Stacy Gore, but you're going to have Sean Burns, who's certified. That will be there at the same time.
All we have to do is prove for one that's highlighted?
Uh huh.
How concerned about the assistant or the middle school head coach and God? Does he know anything about God?
He plays that.
I think that he's had to be trained.
He's taken the putt putt course a lot lately, he's done it there.
Any questions? Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Certainly.
A motion is there, second?
Second.
Motion and a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. E is a list of substitute teachers for approval. And Mr. Humphrey, assuming all those have been through all the proper training and all that kind of stuff?
They have, there's an asterisk there for pending paperwork. I don't see any pending paperwork. Yes, I do. I see a few there, and those that have pending paperwork will not be put in our school until that's completed. But they've been trained.
Highly qualified subs there. There's some highly qualified subs.
Absolutely, there are.
Do they call those first, or do they just take them after the order?
They rank, they call them by rank, the most experienced first. And by experience, I don't mean years, they've been doing it, it's training. A person with a teaching certificate would be called before someone with just a bachelor's degree, which would be called before someone with maybe two years, et cetera.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve substitution teachers. Have a motion, is there a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's go ahead, Mr. Charlie, to view the financials.
I apologize, Ms. Wondle, because I was the last one to get my information to her today. I had come in as one of them with great plans to get those knocked out first thing, and after a morning of, you know, where's my, what bus is my child riding? I got them this afternoon, but that means we're still growing. I think we probably added some more students today because we didn't have a lot of questions. But July, we're just getting started, you know? There's really nothing major to report.
Charlie, let me interject right here. I should have said earlier, as of today, looking back at our count from last year, we have 100 more students present than we did a year ago when we started during our first week of school.
Yeah, and I think that's...
And we felt that in the transportation area.
I think that's going to continue to rise, because we are having a lot more, you know, riders and a lot more people that have, you know, called in, so we're really growing, you know? It's...
So it's pretty much spread out through?
No, it's mostly in kindergarten and third grade. Now, after that, it's kind of spread out. But the two largest classes, kindergarten, we had to add two teachers there. Second grade, we went and added a teacher, and now we've got a third grade that's right on the bubble. We'll give it another week and take a look at it and see if we need to hire, but we may have to hire another third grade teacher because of growth. I think we're okay. Shreya, wherever Shreya's at, we do look at that every day, and we're in good shape everywhere else, but we are looking at it better.
You're sure we don't get to high school?
No, high school is about where it was this time last year. It's in the younger grades, middle school too. But primary and elementary, now if we can hang on to them, we've got over 200 kindergartners, and that'd be a big graduating class. I mean, if we can hang on to them for another year. I would just tell them that we look at that, those requests every day, and our biggest growth has been in kindergarten. It was second, we leveled that out, now it's third grade, which is filling the pitch.
What's the total number?
Seventeen ninety-five.
We're seeing, from my indication so far, still continue to be a lot of growth out on the west side of the county, a lot of new military families. I think somebody put in a good word for us over at the airport base.
I just gotta talk to her.
Yeah. We are continuing to grow, and they made the changes to the budget, and all the expenses look good for July, so if y'all have any questions.
I should have mentioned that earlier. I apologize.
I know we were talking about it earlier, and then I sort of forgot about it myself until that point, but that's good news.
Did our new bus come in?
We haven't got it, but I did talk to the salesman last week, and they have it back from the factory to their thing, and they've got to put the cameras and do a few more cosmetics, and we're expecting then a couple more weeks.
My drive?
Okay.
Yeah. I'm going to look for a driver. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Charlie.
How about our new, we can get a new car?
Yeah, I think we...
Yes, it should be parked right outside. Take a look at it. It's not transfaking new, but it might as well be.
What did we get?
Ford Taurus, 2012.
2012 Ford Taurus.
Did you drive that?
I think we got them all checked out with all kinds of signs.
The chief drives it.
All that kind of stuff too.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We want it invisible.
All right, I think we have some visitors with us tonight as well, from Mr. Servant's class, is that right?
Yes, sir.
We're glad to have y'all with us. Y'all let me know if Frankie Patton causes problems in the class. Y'all get extra credit for coming?
No, it's for test area.
Y'all get extra credit for coming?
No, it's for test grade.
It's a test grade.
Two test grades.
Two test grades. Two As there, if you come.
Tim Harrison is outside, and his car is also, you can take a look at those. We'll let you go and then, uh...
Caller, resume, Dr. Orville. We are on the personnel and contract services, C, transfers.
Make a motion that we approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And do we have anyone here for any further comments? Hey, how are Frankie? What y'all want to tell us? Huh? Neither one. I think that's all we have.
Are you going to take us for supper?
She's getting to get the house. I think Monday's good. And can a motion to adjourn?
We're going to have to.
Certainly.